Which stands, "One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you, and thank you, Amy. It is so good to see everybody here on this January 24th meeting. And there's lots of great energy in this room. So excited. Thank you so much. Roll call, Mrs. Vaughn. Thank you. Moving on to special items. First item is student celebrations. Dr. Stevens.
Yes, but before we get to student celebration, I just want to share a little, Diddy, happy School Board Appreciation Week to you. And that's enough. Okay, so we're moving on to student celebrations. Biff Tu Rega, if you would come forward, please. This evening, I'm very excited to celebrate a Telahoma High School student who serves as the Vice President of National Honor Society, has served on the Mayor's Youth Council, is President of Future Business Leaders of America, and the National English Honor Society, has been involved in numerous community service projects, and is on my high school student advisory council. As if that isn't impressive enough, I know, my goodness. I'm excited to share that she has now been named as a United States Senate Youth Program winner. Ms. Biff Tu Rega was one of two Tennessee students. Did you hear that? One of two Tennessee high school students selected with this incredible accolade. After nominations from teachers and principals, delegates and alternates were selected by the State Department of Education nationwide, and the District of Columbia, and Department of Defense Education Activity. Dr. Penny Schwinn, our Commissioner of Education, the Chief State School Officer for each jurisdiction, confirmed the final selection. Biff Tu will receive a one-time $10,000 scholarship and have the opportunity to attend Washington Week virtually. During Washington Week, the student delegates will attend online meetings and briefings with senators, the president, a justice of the Supreme Court, and leaders of cabinet agencies, among others. The United States Senate Youth Program was created in 1962 and has been sponsored by the Senate and fully funded by the Hearst Foundation since inception. The program's overall mission is to help instill in each student delegate with more profound knowledge of the American political process and a lifelong commitment to public service. Please help me in congratulating this extraordinary young lady.
Congratulations.
And we go from celebrating one to celebrating one team of many. And so I am going to ask this amazing Telahoma High School football team to come forward onto the stage as I share a little bit about this historic season. And if we have coaches present, you all feel free to come and join the student athletes that are here this evening. So as noted, it was a historic season for the Telahoma High School football team as they captured the program's first-ever state title in an absolute thriller, beating Elizabethan 21-14 in double overtime back in December, on December 4th. Feels like yesterday to me. Does it feel like that to y'all? Yeah, that was a good day. The Wildcats finished the year with a perfect 15-0 record in what was absolutely an amazing season. After the season wrapped up, the individual accolades kept coming as several players received awards. Telahoma's Justice Chadwick was named the Tennessee Titan Mr. Football Kicker of the Year, while head coach John Olive was named the Titans Coach of the Year. On top of that, Telahoma saw 18 players named to the All-Region Teams. Ryan Scott was named the Region's Offensive Player of the Year. Ian Poe was selected as the Lineman of the Year. Chris Uzleton was voted the Special Teams Player of the Year, and Justice Chadwick was named the Kicker of the Year. Telahoma saw eight players named to the Region's First Team. Owen Stroop, Brandon Painter, Kayden Tucker, Kayden Bradford were all named to the First Team Defense, while Jacob Dixon, Jaden Taylor, Logan Crouch, and Keyshawn Cummings were selected as First Team members of the offense. Joseph Duncan, Jackson Sheffield, Will Parton, Landon Fauch, Zach Swiger, and Cameron Robinson were voted as All-Region Second Team members. Five Wildcats also recently received honors from the Tennessee Football Coaches Association, and head coach John Olive was named the Class 4A Coach of the Year. Ryan Scott, Kayden Bradford, Ian Poe, Brandon Painter, and Justice Chadwick were all honored by the Tennessee Football Coaches Association. What an absolute pleasure it is to have Coach Olive, the coaching staff, and this state championship football team with us tonight.
We want to present to the team, the coaches, and the school this banner that has been given. And they can be displayed where you all think it best to be. Please think about. And board members, if you would, come forward and find a spot.
And football team, we do not expect you to stay. Anyone who want me. We're good. We don't mind waiting.
Now that is a fun celebration.
That's fun. And thank you all so much for coming. I know you have heard baseball, wrestling, and basketball that's going on right now, plus the million other things that you do. So thank you all for coming.
And as we continue celebrations, the state of Tennessee has designated the week of January 23rd as School Board Appreciation Week. Tonight, I would like to celebrate our exceptional Board of Education. The level of commitment of these seven board members to support what is best for our students is beyond exceptional. It has been a sincere pleasure for me to work alongside you these last 19 months. So Amy Dodson, Amy Johnson, Andy Kim, Pat Sid, and Teresa, all of you dedicate an incredible amount of time, energy, and care to provide a structure to support students, to support teachers and staff and our administrators. You are deeply and greatly appreciated for what you do for our district. To celebrate you, you have each found a library book which has been donated to each of your designated school libraries in honor of you and your service to the students. You will find a little note in there to you, and I hope you will take this book home and read it, but make sure you return it to your school's library because it does belong to them. But this is for honoring your service to students, teachers, and staff at Telahoma City Schools. I thank each of you for what you do every single day to make this district absolutely extraordinary. If you will leave your book at your seat tonight, Sandy will be sure, well, actually, I changed my mind, so I want you to take those home. So you make sure you do that, and then just return them to your school. Mr. Welsh, may I see your book for just a moment? So Mr. Welsh is at FARA. How appropriate is this book that's donated on his behalf? If I built a school.
Yeah.
How appropriate. I hope you will enjoy all of your books.
It's surrounded by frogs.
Frog paper. What fun.
Thank you, District, for the books and for recognizing us. And I know that I speak for all the board members that it's our honor. It truly is our honor to be able to serve the district. And we appreciate the goodies that we've been given. And West Middle School brought some decaf coffee, knowing that we all would be affected by the caffeine, and some scones for us. So please make sure you get something as you head out. So thank you, thank you. What a wonderful week. And it's my honor to be able to serve with all of you. And I appreciate all of you so very much. Thank you. Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Amy Johnson, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Sid Hill. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Mrs. Vaughn? All in favor, thank you. Individuals to address the board. Do we have anyone who would like to address the board on an agenda item? Seeing there's no one, we'll move on. Consent agenda. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda as presented? Motion by Pat Welsh, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy Dodson. Second by Amy Dodson. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Thank you so much. Moving on to unfinished business.
Well, we are back to the band trip, and we have another change. This evening, we have another update to the band's trip for March 2022. They have been scheduled to perform, as you know, in the St. Patrick's Day Parade in Dublin, Ireland, but due to COVID and travel challenges, it was then changed and approved by you all to Oahu, Hawaii. You all have been so supportive of the band, and these changes through your approvals, which have been appreciated. Unfortunately, the trip to Oahu and the travel restrictions have forced cancellation of that trip. Band parents were surveyed to gather insight to another trip, and therefore, we are bringing forward a trip to Orlando, Florida. This trip is only being offered to current ninth through 12th grade students, band students and families, since it is not a performance-based trip as the others were. Please know that refunds were offered to all participants of the Ireland and Hawaii trips if they chose not to participate in the Orlando trip. For those who will be making the trip to Orlando and had paid funds for Ireland or Hawaii, those funds were then transferred to the new trip. And refunds were sent out as the trip is almost a third of the cost of the previously scheduled trips. Please welcome Mr. Justin Scott, who's with us this evening, to address any lingering questions you may have related to the new overnight band trip. Do you all have any questions for Mr. Scott?
How many students? First of all, we're all so sorry that you've had to deal with all this. I mean, it's been an incredible amount of work and a lot of disappointment. So I'm really excited that you all have come up with with an option for the kids. How many students are going to be able to go with you?
This trip is definitely smaller. We have 55 going. Of that, there are a few parents, but the majority of those are students that are traveling. So take it one bus. It'll be a quick trip down, a few days in some parks and coming back. But we wanted to do something mainly for, especially our juniors and seniors that weren't going to get to travel again before they graduated. So, but yeah, it's been a fun mental journey around the world to nowhere, but we're going to get there somewhere.
I may have missed when?
Oh, same dates. It's in March over spring break. So we'll leave on the Sunday of the beginning of spring break and come back on Thursday.
And I do want to commend Mr. Scott and his heart for this trip and his just dedication to ensuring there is a trip of value when we transition from Ireland to Oahu. All the work that was done that he and his team did to scout this option out and really think it through and get some great performance opportunities. And then when that became a hurdle, we sat down again and worked together. But I just really commend you and your heart and spirit, and thank you for pushing through and having a trip just to acknowledge those upperclassmen in particular.
Thank you. And I want to make sure I acknowledge too, the gateway company we've been working with has been absolutely incredible. I mean, the fact that every one of the participants was able to get a full refund, especially in this day and time with everything going on, was just unheard of. So they've been bending over backwards to accommodate us. So we're excited to continue to work with them in the future. And, but thank you for all of your support, even though we didn't get to go where we really wanted to. We're going to go somewhere, so we'll figure it out.
That's right. And although the trip has had to change and things have been difficult, you all had a great weekend.
We did, yep. Midstate concerts happened, even though they got postponed for snow. But I was telling Dr. Stevens as we came in, it was quite remarkable because we, especially with the, you know, the learning loss over the last couple of years, and sitting down to listen to those concerts, every director walked away. They were better than previous years. And I think it's, you know, what you said is that they were so excited. The kids were just so excited to be back to live performances, and it was absolutely amazing. The level of musicianship was awesome. So we had a great weekend, so it was really good.
Wonderful. Wonderful. Any more questions or comments? Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion to accept the band trip change of location to Orlando, Florida in March of 2022? Motion by Amy Dodson, is there a second? Second by Amy Johnson, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Motion passes, thank you so much. Mr. Scott? You all have a wonderful, wonderful time. Disciplinary Hearing Authority, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, Board Policy 6.317 states that annually, the Director of Schools will recommend a three-member disciplined hearing authority to the Board of Education for approval. This disciplined hearing authority will conduct appeals for students who have been suspended for more than 10 school days. Policy states that at least one member shall be a licensed employee. Administration recommends Dr. April Norris, Dr. Shannon Duncan, and Mr. Jason Ray to serve as the disciplined hearing authority. Dr. Norris will serve as the chairperson of this authority.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to accept Dr. April Norris, Dr. Shannon Duncan, and Mr. Jason Ray as the disciplinary hearing authority? Motion by Sid Hill, a second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh, is there any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Great, thank you so much. Building and grounds update, Mr. Welsh.
I did a real good job preparing for wrestling practice afterwards, but I forgot my tablet.
It's okay.
The Building and Grounds Committee met in December and discussed the following projects. We reviewed the design drawings for the THS tennis courts. We requested a couple of modifications to OL Engineering, and they're working to incorporate those modifications into the designs. We anticipate bidding on this project this spring. We discussed the possibility of replacing HVAC diffusers in the Bel Air classrooms with train. This is an agenda item for consideration on tonight's agenda. OLG is designing updates and modifications to the restrooms at Bel Air. We envision this project including new floor tile, new fixtures, new vanities, new partitions, new paint, and an improved exhaust system. We anticipate being able to bid this project in the spring. The Bel Air HVAC replacement project with train materials has been ordered and are being manufactured. Train is anticipating having materials ready to begin installation in March of this year. Supply chain issues have been a challenge for materials. The proposed awning project at Bel Air is in the final stages of specifications and hopefully will be bid in the spring. We are planning to paint the exterior of the central office in the upcoming spring. And bathroom tile project, damaged floor tile, has been completed at East. Are there any questions?
Thank you for the report.
Yes, ma'am.
No questions? Moving on to Bel Air HVAC diffuser replacement, Mr. Ray.
Thank you, Chairperson. In addition to the Bel Air HVAC work previously approved by the board using SRR2 grant funds, it's come to our attention that the diffusers, which is the vent that hangs down in the center of the room at Bel Air, needs our attention. We asked Train for two quotes and two options. One quote was to remove the existing diffusers and replace them with new diffusers. Additionally, the flex duct work would be replaced, and the hard duct would be cleaned. The quoted price for this option was $181,203. The second option was to clean the existing ceiling diffusers and duct work. Train noted that this option allows the possibility of the diffusers still looking dirty due to staining over time, as well as the possibility of the grates breaking, excuse me, the grates on the diffuser breaking while being cleaned. This would require the replacing of any diffusers or grates that broke. The quoted price for option two is $99,821, and that cost does exclude the cost of replacing any broken parts or pieces that would be damaged during the cleaning. Building and grounds committee has met and discussed these options, and along with, administration recommends option one, which is the full replacement of the ceiling diffusers at a cost of $101,203. Ms. Uzleton.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to authorize Train to proceed with option one, new diffusers and new flex duct work, as well as cleaning hard duct work at Bel Air Elementary in the amount of $181,203?
So move, Andy Witt.
A motion by Andy Witt, second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Is there any discussion? Any questions for Mr. Ray?
I would just say I'd like to commend the Bel Air staff. I mean, I know that you all as a board have done significant work with them and helped them out with one of the oldest buildings that we have here, but it does have good bones that we learned. But I think that, you know, anything that we can do to help out that school, because they have done their best to make that school as beautiful as possible over 20 years, I think it's well within our decisions as a board to support this.
Very good. Everybody ready to vote? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Very good. Motion passes, thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Policy update, excuse me, Amy Johnson.
Actually, I do not have. Do I need to come and give your?
I will go ahead and do it for you. Okay, the policies that we have been working on are 2.804, 3.404, 6.303, and 6.204. And we would like to ask the board to accept the updates to policies 2.804, 6.204, and 6.303 on a first and final reading, and updates to policy 3.404 on a second and final reading. Do I have a motion to accept the updates to these policies? Motion by Amy Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Amy Dodson, any discussion? Seeing there's none, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Very good, thank you. Motion passes. New business, 2022, 2023 budget. That sounds crazy to be thinking about that, doesn't it?
Thank you. And this is obviously not an action item tonight, but informative. But again, it feels strange to be talking about next year's budget already, but such is life in the accounting world. We have begun communicating and brainstorming with building-level leadership on their needs and desires for the upcoming year. And so as we assess needs, we're also waiting on the state to see what our BEP estimate will be. We'll still be a couple of months away from obtaining that number and having a good concrete revenue base to start with. So we'll be continuing to communicate over the next several months and with more details to follow as we get closer to needing to approve our next year's budget. I'll be glad to answer any questions that I can at this point.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions?
Real quick, when General Assembly's in session now and they're attacking school funding, will it affect the BEP for this budget? Or are we talking about subsequent years?
So the new formula that has been discussed, the new funding formula that's been discussed at the state level will not be for the fiscal year '23 school year. It'll be anticipated as beginning in the fiscal year '24. So the '23-'24 school year is when the new formula is set to begin. Thank you.
Very good. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Ray. School buses, Mr. Ray.
Thank you. With the increased daily routes and needs of our special education students, along with additional middle school sports and curricular field trips, TCS has a need for additional buses. The Finance Committee discussed this need in December, and we recently accepted invitations to bid on two different buses, with one of the buses having an alternate option. One bus specified in bid is similar to the last four TCS buses that we've purchased. It is a year 2023 or newer, Class C, Thomas-built, 78-passenger bus with heating and air conditioning, has below-floor storage, meeting all federal and state requirements. This bus has an anticipated delivery date of January 2023, if ordered in January 2022. The price on this bus is quoted at $111,555. This bus will be a replacement for our current bus number four, purchased in 1998, and has over 162,000 miles on it. This is a standard replacement of an older bus that's life cycle is coming to a close. The second bus we bid is a smaller bus. We specified a 22-passenger bus and a 32-passenger bus as an alternate. The 22-passenger bus is a Model 2022 or newer on a Chevrolet chassis with 11 36-inch seats. So two passengers per seat is the calculation there. With heating and air conditioning, meeting all federal and state requirements, this bus has an anticipated delivery date of December 2022. This bus is quoted at $78,051. The alternate bid to this 32-passenger bus is a 22-passenger bus. It is a Type C. Sorry, I believe I got that backwards, didn't I? The alternate bid to the 22-passenger bus is a 32-passenger, Type C, Model 2023 or newer, Thomas-built, with 16 36-inch seats, with heating and air conditioning, below-floor storage, meeting all federal and state requirements. This bus has an anticipated delivery date of January 2023, if ordered in January 2022. The price of this bus is quoted at $104,156. Currently, the work-based learning class at T H S uses a seventy-eight passenger bus each school day. The work-based learning class transports a maximum of fourteen students this school year. By replacing this seventy-eight passenger bus with a smaller bus, it would allow the seventy-eight passenger bus currently being used to be available for co-curricular activities as well as athletic trips. Staff's recommendation is to purchase the twenty-two passenger bus to be used for work-based learning. So in summary, administration recommends the purchase of one seventy-eight passenger bus in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, and one twenty-two passenger bus in the amount of seventy-eight thousand and fifty-one dollars. If approved, we will order both buses, but they will not be delivered for a year as that is the current timeline for delivery. Due to the anticipated delivery dates, these buses would be included in next year's twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three budget. Chairperson Essington.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of one seventy-eight passenger bus in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and fifty-five dollars, and one twenty-two passenger bus in the amount of seventy-eight thousand, fifty-one dollars to be included in the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three budget?
So moved.
Motion by Sid Hill, second?
Second.
Second by Pat Welsh. Is there any discussion? Anyone have any questions for Mr. Ray or any discussion? Seeing there's none, we'll vote. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Ray. Yay! Buses, new fancy buses. Food service van purchase, Angela Cardwell.
Okay. Do you all have the memo for the food service van?
We do.
Okay. Would you like me to read it?
Please.
Okay. I'm looking to purchase a cargo van to add to the fleet. This is something I can purchase through the State of Tennessee Department of General Services Central Procurement Office on the statewide contract for Ford of Murfreesboro. The purposes of the cargo van are as follows: to transport product between schools when borrowing is necessary or transportation is limited for drop shipments, assisting in summer feeding routes to increase destinations to feed our community, and to step in as our backup main source of delivery when the food truck requires maintenance so that our routes are not interrupted or canceled. It's also to allow for emergency purchases for large quantities from retail stores when our distribution is cut from our suppliers. It's also to help limit beg borrowing and stealing, which is a metaphor from the maintenance or C S S building and department when we need a way to haul things. With the climate of the supply chain issues rising and escalating quickly, I'm asking for approval once a definitive price and vehicle delivery time is available. The cost will range between thirty and forty-five thousand dollars, depending on the customization and availability of upgrades needed to equip the van with what we need. As of November, there were twenty other districts on the waiting list ahead of me with an E T A ranging from February to April. My hope is to get this ordered A S E P, and we can get it by this summer. The nutrition department has adequate funding to purchase this vehicle, and I'm requesting approval of a not-to-exceed cost of forty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of a food service van not to exceed the cost of forty-five thousand dollars? Motion by Amy Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? And also just noting again that there is adequate funding to purchase this vehicle through nutrition.
We don't have any vans. We just have the food truck.
Great. Any other questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Cardwell, thank you so much. Purple Star Resolution, Dr. Stevens.
The Tennessee Purple Star School Award Program is open to military-friendly schools that display a major commitment to serving military-connected families and their students. As all of you know, Telahoma is a strong military-friendly community. Arnold Air Force Base has been a cornerstone of our community for many decades and has provided an extraordinary resource for growth and employment. As military families move to Telahoma to support the mission of A E D C, it's important that we as a district and we as a community provide support in many facets to these families. The Tennessee Purple Star Program allows us to receive recognition for what we are already doing in support of these families and allows us to grow in the support that we provide. Telahoma High School will be applying for this Purple Star designation, and tonight we ask for your approval in support of the following resolution that I will read for you. Whereas today, over one million Americans are bravely serving in the United States Armed Services, more than five hundred thousand Tennessee volunteers have actively served their nation away from home. And whereas over two thousand five hundred veterans and military members reside in the city of Telahoma and immediately surrounding area with four thousand eight hundred and forty-four veterans residing throughout Coffee County. And whereas Tennessee is home to thirty-eight thousand military children, making it the twelfth-largest military child state in our country. And whereas Tennessee is the thirteenth-largest veteran state with more than one hundred thousand veteran-connected children in the state. Whereas members of military and veteran families may experience unique challenges and frequent changes in schools during their K twelve education. And whereas frequent moves, family separations through deployments, and reintegration issues present unique challenges to military families. And whereas the Telahoma City School District is committed to meeting the unique needs of all students, therefore be it resolved, the Telahoma City School District offers our gratitude and support for all military personnel, their families, and veterans for their commitment and sacrifice in service to our state and country. And resolved, the Telahoma City School District will make every effort to connect military families with the resources they need. I do want to take a moment also to acknowledge Mr. Quick, Telahoma High School Principal, for his work on the application, as well as Mr. Crutchfield, who will be the point of contact for us should we receive this award. Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution in support of military families as presented?
So moved.
Motion by Sid Hill. Is there a second?
Second. Andy Witt.
Second by Andy Witt. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed? Mrs. Vaughn? Very good. Thank you so much. Beverly is going to be so happy to hear that. District report, superintendent's report, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, we haven't been together since the November board meeting, and it's great to be back and see all of you. There has been much going on since our return from Christmas break. But before I begin sharing my report, I would like to recognize and thank all of our school nurses who have done an exceptional job with the many, many challenges related to COVID, particularly as changes happen and the recommendations even change from day to day and week to week. Kudos to them. And Gina Bumbalo, our coordinated school health director. Additionally, a huge shout out to all teachers, staff, and our leaders who are going to extremes to help and support students, not to mention one another during the challenging rise of the Omicron variant. We have such a dedicated group of leaders, teachers, and staff who continue to keep their focus exactly where it should be, on students' needs. I am so thankful for everyone in Telahoma City Schools. I'm excited to share that a new leadership internship program has started in the district. This professional learning opportunity is for aspiring leaders in Telahoma City Schools. This year-long program will build capacity and equip these educators to eventually pursue a career in school leadership should they choose to do so. There were certain requirements to apply. Applicants had to hold a current Tennessee administrative license and had to have completed at least three full years with Telahoma City Schools. Once these requirements were met, interested applicants submitted specific documents, the completed application, and rationale as to why they should be considered for this very unique and inaugural opportunity. A panel, including myself, reviewed these applications. We had nine candidates initially, two of which decided it was not the right time for them to pursue. After careful review of the seven application packets, we selected four to enter into this year-long internship. I'm excited to share that Josh Harris, Ashley King, Sandy Cleneris, and Jennifer Ray officially started in the program last week. I look forward to working with them and watching them grow in their capacity as future leaders. I also look forward to watching our principals and assistant principals lead and guide them along the way. Our interns have been assigned a principal and will begin their journey in those schools in February, and I know almost every one of them has made contact, if not all of them already. At the October board meeting, which will be here before we know it, believe it or not, you will be hearing from each one of these four interns as they share with you how this internship has impacted them and their learning and growth in leadership. This program will continue on a yearly basis. So a year from now, I will be sharing the new cohort to join this program, which is very exciting. Sometimes in January, of course, it's hard to love those cold, dreary months as we've been seeing lots of wintry weather of late. But a huge bright spot for me is that we get to announce and share the building-level and district-level Teachers of the Year, whom we will celebrate in the coming months officially. This year, I'm excited to celebrate these amazing teachers as building-level Teachers of the Year. Beth Ray at Bel Air Elementary, Amanda Hazlitt, East Lincoln Elementary, Corinne Moyers, Jack Tefera Elementary, Tabitha Tucker, Robert E. Lee Elementary, Travis Thompson, East Middle School, Kathy McMillan, West Middle School. And at the high school, we have three building winners, Missy Aiken, Angela Pendgraf, and Amy Sisk. Special surprise visits were made over the last two weeks to the three district-level Teachers of the Year. We surprised Tabitha Tucker, Kathy McMillan, and Amy Sisk as our district-level Teachers of the Year. These teachers will now move on to the regional round of competition soon. Congratulations to all of these brilliant educators. In news from our campuses, East Lincoln Elementary Principal, Mr. Scott Hargrove, wanted me to say how proud he is of his faculty and staff picking up the slack for each other. He shared with me that it is a real blessing to have such a great group of people serving our students, and what an honor it is for him to lead his team. I couldn't agree more, Mr. Hargrove. The Jack Tefera Elementary family is growing. Hmm. Mr. Moore is excited to share that Jack Tefera fifth-grade teacher, Mrs. Clements, recently welcomed twins, a baby girl and a baby boy. What happy news to share. Big congratulations to the Clements family. Robert E. Lee Principal, Mary Gilbert, has plenty to celebrate, and she shares special teachers' planned activities for the Lion Pride Celebration in December, which students earned with their Lion Pride points. Such a wonderful celebration of lion, demonstrating ready for pride, positivity, respect, integrity, determination, and excellence. Pride. Robert E. Lee is off to a fantastic new year with the State Personnel Development Grant Training, we call that Spadig. Staff reviewing their one word for the new year and eye-ready reading and math diagnostic testing. They're excited about the learning gaps being closed, and I'm excited about that, too, and look forward to seeing their students grow. Friendship Fridays are memorable at Robert E. Lee and provide fun memories as students buddy up with other students. Our fifth-grade students continue to amaze all with their kinder buddies, reading, working on projects, reviewing sight words, writing, and many other things. Buddy up is a great time. One hundred days of school celebrations are happening at Robert E. Lee. Grade levels are participating in fun activities, and my, how some students and staff members have aged. All the gray hair and curlers, my goodness. T H S Principal Jason Quick shares, in December, the Telahoma High School Concert Symphonic Band presented an outstanding performance in the Sounds of the Season. Telahoma students were inspired by a presentation from T H S alum Will Helsley, formerly of SpaceX. The T H S faculty and staff were blessed and thankful to have breakfast provided to them by board member Dr. Sid Hill and his lovely wife on the last day of school before Christmas break. The T H S Lady Wildcats basketball team captured the Gulf Breeze Classic in Pensacola during winter break. Way to go, Lady Cats. What a great place to be on winter break. Continuing on with some high school news, the T H S Lady Bowlers captured the district crown for only the second time in school history. Wow. The T H S Boys Wrestlers are ranked number five in the state. Girls are ranked number three in the state. Last Saturday, the girls ended up region runner-up, while the boys will have their regional match on Thursday. And if you haven't been to a match, you really need to go. I love it. Our girls will travel for sectionals this Saturday. If they win, they'll be state-bound. The boys will need to be the top two on Thursday to advance to sectionals on Saturday. T H S band had thirty-six students named for mid-state band and seven named to all-state band. This is outstanding. T H S students continue to give back to the community. I'm sure you've paid attention to that in our local media, including J R O T C cadets gathering donated supplies for the Shepherd's House and the T H S softball team gathering toys to assist in the Telahoma Fire Department, and the T H S wrestlers helping community neighbors clean and recover from the recent tornado. T H S freshman Ariana Marin was selected to present her artwork at the Fourteenth Annual Middle Tennessee Regional Student Art Exhibition at Lipscomb University. Telahoma Swimming has seven swimmers qualify for the state regional meet in Nashville on January twenty-eighth. This is fabulous. Good luck to our swimmers. On January fifteenth, the T H S J R O T C drill team took first place overall at the Navy-Marine Corps J R O T C Drill Meet at Mount Juliet. They took first in color guard, first in armed platoon drill, and second in unarmed platoon drill. I'm so very proud of this program and its continued excellence. I'm looking forward to meeting again with my middle school and high school advisory teams. This Wednesday, I connect with my high school team, and next Monday, it will be with my middle school team. This student connection is so important to me. We are here to serve students and give them the absolute best education possible. Their feedback is incredibly helpful as it informs next steps, which is invaluable in our work. I do want to say one more time, a big thank you to each of you as our school board as we celebrate you during School Board Appreciation Week. Each and every one of you is a true blessing to our district. Thank you for all you do as we partner to provide our students with an excellent education. Chairman.
Thank you. What a great report. Again, I want to say how much I appreciate the board members who have served in the past, as well as those who are presently serving. The great work that you do is vital to the advancement of public schools, and you're appreciated. I also wanted to let you know that I attended the legislative breakfast last week. Rush Bricken was the only legislator in attendance, and I spoke about the lengths that our system is going to to keep students safe and that whether or not it's COVID or whatever, that safety is always the most important thing that we do for our students and our employees. I also shared concern about the B E P rewrite, and unfortunately, Rush shared the same concern. He did not have any insight and asked him to please reach out to us if something came up, and he said that he would. In your, on your desk, in a packet, there is a, some information that you need to fill out and have back to Mrs. Vaughn by Wednesday, please, as we work on our Board of Distinction for next November. Thank you. City Board Liaison Report, I am going to be giving that today because Alderman Blackwell is at her meeting. T-Mobile Hot Spots, Jennifer Moody and Jordan Wilkins met with representatives from T-Mobile recently and were informed of a grant project that could be beneficial to our schools and students. It is regarding hot spots and our school system's eligibility to receive a fixed amount of them. I believe they will be emailing you all directly. I believe they will be emailing you all directly. Traffic. One of the biggest concerns I hear from citizens that I'm sure are echoed to you all is regarding drivers, and specifically, drivers in school zones. Our police department has been placing signs in areas that have consistently heard complaints from, and are also planning to share with the public while this has been necessary, and asking them to be more conscientious drivers. Please let me know if there are other areas where you see a need for this signage. I believe Lane Street doesn't have them yet, and I will check into that. And she said that's the big stuff for now. That is her report. Thank you for sending that to us. Personnel, Dr. Stevens.
Yes, you have personnel changes for the months of December and January, and they are presented as an attachment for you.
Thank you. Monthly Financial Report, Mr. Ray.
Thank you again. Your report is through the end of December. The good news about that is that that means that January is here, which means that there is a good spot revenue-wise, when the city begins sending allocation checks, and typically, end-of-the-year sales tax is positive. Nothing extraordinary to point out. Open for any questions that you may have related to that report.
Anyone have any questions? Okay, thank you so much. Is there anything else to come before the board?
One real quick note, I'll be attending TSBA Board of Directors meeting. It's on February fourteenth. So if anybody, I'm sure I'm will come in contact with you before then, but if you have any kind of concern, issue that you'd like some feedback from, please let me know before that, February fourteenth.
February fourteenth. So it's before the-
Great place to spend Valentine's Day.
It's before the legislative thing starts that afternoon. Great. Okay. Anything else? Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.